I'd like to call to order the city council meeting December 4th, 2025, 501 Main Street at 5:30 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, ununderdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice oral.
May I have a roll call?
Crenshaw.
Here.
Walker. Mullen.
Here.
Cackley.
Here.
Jade.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman. Bryant. Greenwald.
Here.
Six present, three absent.
Item number four, Mayor's Correspondence. So just let you know if you don't have anything to do this weekend, here's a whole list. So here we go, real quick. Friday, December 4th, Main Street Kia Cucks Incorporated's annual putting on the glitz from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Come support your local businesses, listen to the carolers and McNamara's Band, ride the Holly Jolly Trolley, sing karaoke, and eat and drink on our Main Street. Don't forget to stop at the Kia Sippy Center, which is our old River City Mall, listen to the live musicians, drink hot chocolate, check out the vendors and the food trucks. Lake Cooper Foundation will be having a craft and vendor show at 810 Main Street. Toys for Tots will be collecting unwrapped toys at the entrance to the City of Christmas from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. L. Trains is having their glitz with music from Brandon Lawson and a first look at their new arcade setup. And The Great River Players present the best Christmas pageant ever at 7:30 PM at 17th South 6th Street. And Saturday, December 5th, there's a grief support group from 11:00 to noon at the Kia Cuck Public Library. The Great River Players will present the best Christmas pageant ever at 7:30 PM again on Saturday night on 17th South 6th Street, and music by Six Strings Down at Sweet Sally starting at 8:00 PM. And then Sunday, December 6th, The Great River Players present the best Christmas pageant ever at 2:00 PM that afternoon, and it's Family Fun Day at the Horner YMCA from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. It's $10 per family for members and $15 per family for non-members. They have cookie decorating, bouncy houses games, and an indoor snowball fight. So if you don't have anything to do this weekend, here's a whole bunch of stuff, and I hope you attend it all as much as you can. Item number five is citizens' request. And with citizens' requests, if anybody has anything that they would like to speak about, please come to the podium, state your name, your address. You have two to three minutes. And if there's anybody there who wants to go first?
Good evening. My name's Jim Rainer. I live at 212 Washington Street. And approximately a year ago, I brought up a question of snow removal at the intersections where the streets and sidewalks meet. And the gentleman was adamant that the city went through with an in loader and cleared the snow from intersections where the streets and sidewalks meet. That is not correct. I have pictures on my phone. I took them today. Vast majority of the intersections in town are not cleared. The one right across, this intersection right here is not clear. Whose responsibility is it to clear the snow if the snow plows leave at the intersections that block access to the sidewalks?
It is the street department, right? Responsibility to clear the street, the intersections?
The street portion of the intersections.
Yes, the street portion of the intersections.
Well, okay, then it's not getting done.
The streets are not clear in the intersection?
Where the street meets the sidewalk, the snow plows leave the berm there when they plow. That berm is still there, preventing people from access and going without having to trudge through a mound of snow to block access to the sidewalks. Look at this intersection right here. We can walk outside and look at it right now if you want. And it's the snow that the snow plows leave in the street, preventing access to the sidewalk as you cross the intersections. I'd do it with this. I'm the exception. No other motorized vehicle, wheelchair in town might stay on sidewalks. They can't do it. It's the city's snow. Should be the city's responsibility to maintain the intersections clear for pedestrian traffic. And it's not getting done. Hasn't been done in the seven years I've been in a wheelchair. So I don't know how difficult it is to move snow four feet.
Most, I think that we've had an extremely large amount of snow this time, so I think that what we'll have to do is have a conversation with the street department and see if we can't get a little better understanding of which way we need to go there.
Well, they've had four working days to get it done, and it hasn't done it.
I understand that. I understand that, sir. And again, we'll have a conversation and see what we can do to get it better.
This wheelchair can't access the sidewalks in this town. And if I can't do it, who can?
I understand that. I understand that, sir. And I will have a conversation myself personally tomorrow with the street department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else? So now we're going to do what's the fun part about this job. One of the fun parts, anyway, is we're going to do some swearing in. Have a couple of our police officers. So let's all come down there, and we'll get started.
Someone's go first.
Is it age before beauty or seniority before less seniority?
We'll let you make that interpretation.
Okay. There you go. If you would raise your right hand. I, Wade Johnson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Wade Johnson, do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And I will honestly demean myself in office.
I will honestly demean myself in office.
And faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of sergeant.
Discharge the duties of sergeant.
Of the city of Kia Cuck.
Of the city of Kia Cuck.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
In accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
And ordinance of said city.
And ordinances of said city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
All right.
Raise your right hand. I, Patrick Haw, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Patrick Haw, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I, and that, and I will honestly demean myself in office.
And that I will honestly demean myself in office.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of captain.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of captain.
Of the city of Kia Cuck.
Of the city of Kia Cuck.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
And ordinance of said city.
And ordinances of said city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Yep.
So everybody, when it's cold outside and things are going crazy, remember those gentlemen right there are protecting our streets and our families, and thank you very much, guys. Item number six, consent agenda. Minutes of our regular city council meeting and council workshop on November 20th, 2025. Appointment of Peggy Moss to the Historic Preservation Commission, term to expire September 1st, 2028. Appointment of Dan Tillman to the Board of Adjustment, fulfilling a term to expire April 1st, 2029. I need a motion to pay the bills and transfers listed in registers number of 5510 through 5512. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven. Now is the time and place for a public hearing awarding a contract for Main Street and North 7th Street traffic signal. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on November 25th, 2025. I am opening the public hearing at 5:41. Do we have any comments or any discussion? Any further discussion? City clerk, any written comments or objections have been received? There being no further comments or objections on this matter, I will close the public hearing at 5:41. Item B, consider resolution awarding a contract for Main Street and North 7th Street traffic signal replacement. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Two bids were received on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, at 11:00 AM for the replacement of the traffic signal at North 7th Street and Main Street. The low bidder was Klein Electric of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $83,785. It is therefore recommended that this council approve a contract with Klein Electric of Des Moines, Iowa, to replace the traffic signal at North 7th Street and Main Street for the total cost of $83,785. Do I have any discussion?
This is all covered with insurance money?
Yes.
I had that exact same question. And then this is from when the truck damaged it correctly?
Correct.
That intersection?
Yep.
Thank you.
So Brian, you were saying that you have worked with this insurance company over the course of the last year and a half or so since the original accident?
Yes, we've had correspondence. It's been, like I told you, a little while since we've had correspondence, but yes.
And they paid for the original lighting, the temp lighting that's in there now?
Yep.
And so they've seemed to do, have been proactive and have followed through up to now. I don't have a guarantee about what happens in the future, but they've recognized and are working under the assumption it's their responsibility.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Could you state who the other bid was from and how much it was?
It was from Kia Cuck Contractors. I don't have the exact amount, but it was in the neighborhood of the.
It's $101,900. It's in the council packet.
Oh, okay.
And just a reminder for folks, if you're looking, does this get posted on the city's website? Oh, maybe I shouldn't have said that. I was gonna say, I was thinking the council all gets it. But anyway, it's $101,900.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight, consider resolution acknowledging the canvas of votes for the 2025 municipal election held November 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Official election results from the Lee County Board of Supervisors are enclosed and are being presented to the city council for acknowledgement. Staff recommends approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number nine, consider resolution approving municipal advisory services agreement with Piper Sandler. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
The city is in the design phase for Tamiya Street reconstruction with associated water line replacement and stormwater separation components intended to be included. We have previously applied for the State Revolving Fund, SRF loan, funding to cover the stormwater separation components designed to assist in meeting combined sewer overflow, CSO eliminations in this area of the community. As we move forward in the loan process, we will need financial consultant assistance in the loan design and repayment design process. The cost of these services is intended to be incorporated in the SRF loan amount. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
So with this item, with doing the SRF financing, it's about $4.7 million that we're, that we submitted for the intended use plan for the maximum amount that we would be borrowing. The compensation is listed in here. It would be 0.2%, which comes to, if it is that $4.7 million, would be about $9,400. It would end up being wrapped up into the SRF loan, the State Revolving Fund loan. We are anticipating going after CDBG funds for $500,000. And we, I think we have eligibility for a separate $500,000 grant that we'll apply for next fall as well on this project. Both of those would help to reduce the SRF portion, the sewer, storm sewer portion of the overall project cost. And I did want to note on the previous agenda item, I assume all the people who are being prospective people to take office January 1st have been contacted about, we're looking to do swearing in when on those positions?
December 18th, the next meeting.
Next council meeting, except I think for your position.
Yes.
You're gonna wait until the January 5th.
I have to wait till January 5th meeting.
So for folks who are looking to follow along as those swearing in ceremonies take place, that'll occur at the next two council meetings.
Any more discussion on the Piper Sandler agreement? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 10, consider resolution approving replacement of the air conditioner system at the Grand Theater. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Enclosing your packet is a request from the Grand Theater for the assistance in funding a much-needed air conditioning system replacement. They lost the ability to cool the facility near the end of the cooling season and are desiring to have the repairs occur before it warms up in the spring. They are anticipating performing the work in March if possible. The Grand Theater typically is self-supporting. Their budget in the general fund usually around 500, around $50,000. Last year it was $85,000 with a large capital expense, but their budget usage fees, along with fundraising and private donations, offset these expenses. The expenditure on the air conditioning system is more significantly, is more significantly, though, with an anticipated cost that could be close to $70,000, which is more than they think they can raise in one year on their own. This was not an anticipated expenditure, but is driven by equipment failure. The Grand Theater Commission thinks they can cover $40,000 of the cost, but will need additional funding to make up the difference. If the council approves the expenditure, it would be out of general fund dollars. If the council moves forward with this, there should be some level in flexibility for how much it covers beyond the $40,000 raised by the Grand Theater. I place $30,000 in the resolution, but this could be amended if you desired at this meeting. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
I just have one question. I see the listing of a Grand Theater Commission. I'm assuming that they do not have, what do you call it, 501(c)(3) status?
No, they're, they're part of the city.
Would that, would that part of the city then preclude them for applying for, like, the Lee County Foundation grants and such?
I don't do those, Annette does those.
They would, they would be eligible to apply for the community foundation grants.
They would or would not?
Would.
Would. Could we suggest that they perhaps pursue that route?
Yeah, we can. I don't know what the timing is on that.
February, isn't it, Brian?
I think it's, I think the next cycle opens in February.
Yes.
They're hoping to have, and they can certainly apply for it. They're hoping to have this done before the season begins, because, I mean, as they ended this last season, it was a little, it got a little stuffy in there.
Okay.
So is the verbiage on this for up to $30,000? So if they were able to acquire more grants and donations, then the city would be at a lower amount for its portion?
And maybe you should, I mean, I wrote this on the assumption that we're saying they're responsible for the first $40,000, which is kind of what they had said, that they felt comfortable being able to raise on their own. And they do on an ongoing basis. They are very proactive about making sure they don't have city money into their operations. If you look at the net on a cash basis, it's within $1,000 or so in any given year between what they raise and turn into the city and what they expense through the city funds. But yeah, that makes sense to apply for. It wouldn't keep us from needing to do the resolution so they have a backstop.
Right. Any more discussion?
So our amount could be not to exceed that $30,000, right? Okay.
That's what I put in there, because, I mean, we don't know what the actual cost of the HVAC system will be. They've gotten an idea that it's going to be in that $70,000 range, but they don't know plus or minus from that what they'll get. And I, and I didn't know if you wanted to be more loose with what was in there or more strict. I just, I just put that in there just so that you had some level of control over it. If you want it to be more flexible, you could amend the wording of this.
Well, I think the up to $30,000 is appropriate for, you know, if they're looking at a total of 70-ish for the project. And the Grand Theater is a gem in this community, and, I mean, it needs to get done. They can't operate in the summer without it, and the harm that it would cause to the building to go a season without cooling would be astronomically more expensive than our portion to keep the HVAC system operational.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Item number 11. Consider resolution approving the purchase of a 2013 Ford F-250 for the street department. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
The street department is in need of a plow truck. The current 2001 Ford F-250 needs to be replaced to get us through the snow, through the snow season. Carson Ford of Carthage, Illinois, has a 2013 Ford F-250 equipped with a plow. We recommend purchasing this truck for $18,367.70 from Carson Ford as a replacement for the above-mentioned truck. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
I have a question. Did we request a Carfax report for maintenance and a number of owners for that vehicle?
No, we did not.
Any more discussion?
Are we trading in the vehicle we have now, or are you?
The 2001 is currently not running.
Okay.
Vehicle maintenance is going to try to get it up and running. Actually, the street department has two vehicles that need replaced. It just so happened when this one quit running, the street manager came to me and said that he had called Carson's, and this truck had just came in, like, Monday. So luckily, it was already equipped with Western snowplow equipment on it, so that was not going to be an extra cost. But hopes are that this one gets us through the season before we'd be looking at purchasing a new one next budget, next fiscal year.
So we're gonna try to fix the one that's not running right now?
Yeah, I just, they don't know how well it would perform with plowing snow along the streets anymore. The thought process, if we get this one purchased and we can get the other one running, we will move it out to the airport to replace the 1970 Ares truck that Raymond currently plows snow with. So then that way, that old one's not out on the streets anymore.
Okay.
So we're buying this one to get us through this winter?
I mean, we'll, we'll use it as long as, as long as we can use it, but the cost difference between buying this used one at $18,000 and equipping a new, new one at $62,000, $18,000 was a little more, seemed a little more doable right now.
But when it comes time, we have the money or whatever, do you?
We're gonna discuss that.
We can take this one and take it down to the airport and use it?
Yeah, we'll take the old one to the airport and use it, and then during the budget talks, we'll, we'll discuss actually purchasing a new plow truck for the street department.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consider, item number 12, consider resolution vacating and disposing for a sum certain of platted, developed, undeveloped streets and alleys in Hawkeye Edition, Kia Cuck, Iowa, Lee County, Iowa. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
The City Planning Commission reviewed the request to vacate all platted, unimproved streets and alleys adjacent in blocks 3, 4, 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, except for 20th Street and Hickory Street in the Hawkeye Edition. After hearing from the abutting property owners that could be affected by the request, the Planning Commission recommended to vacate all requested streets and alleys except for 25th Street. Hickory, 20th, and 25th Street will remain platted public streets and may be used for access to abutting property owners. Please note that although these are platted streets, they have never been improved and will require a considerable, considerable amount of work to be usable. I am waiting on a broker's price opinion considering a fair market value for this property. I should have this document prior to the council meeting of December 4th, 2025. Recommendation is to vacate and dispose of the requested platted public right-of-way.
I did receive the broker's price opinion this afternoon from Tammy Panther for $10,000.
Any more discussion?
We've looked this over, and this is the correct way to do it, and, and not, it does give access to the piece of property that could be landlocked in, which we can't do, but we do have a way to get into that piece of property.
Mr. Meritz and Brackenberrys both have access to their property if needed. It would go down Hickory Street, then 20th? That's, do you have the maps there, Steve?
Here, it's right here. See, these weren't, that wasn't vacated, neither was that, and then one of these streets over here, 24th?
Actually, I had a different map. I'm not sure why it didn't get in there, but up here is 25th, and that's not, yeah, that's not included in the vacation.
25th isn't vacated, so you have access to this property back here, too.
But on Hickory, you're saying you're going down to 20th?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't this a ditch in between 20th and 25th?
As I stated in my memo, it's gonna, you know, it would take quite a bit of work to able, I mean, either way you go, it's 25th. It's gonna take quite a bit of work to get access to the property for the Brackenberrys, and it'll take quite a bit for Morris Ear.
So if we go to 21st, next street, whichever, I don't know what they should be doing, upper? Get access to Meritz?
It's still a ditch in 20th.
Still what?
It's still a ditch or a ravine in 20th.
When you, at the end of upper?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, he can, they can construct some type of a.
Mr. Meritz got his hand up. Would you like to come to the microphone and?
Michael Meritz, Kia Cuck, Iowa, 382 Wyatt Lane, Kia Cuck. If you vacate those, and I don't know how, you're gonna talk about mine later, but we don't know the answer to that yet either, so I'd like to hand these, probably a good time to hand them out. I'd like to hand these, probably a good time to hand them out, I guess, but.
So Pam? What is your idea about 30, 40, 50, 60, and 70? Can you tell me enough where my access is?
So Pam, is it, we need to move this discussion to the workshop?
Thank you.
I mean, you can discuss it. We already held the public hearing two weeks ago.
Thank you.
For this vacation.
Yes.
So, I mean, the council can do whatever they wish to do, is.
You would have the ability, if you wanted to delay a decision, depending what you're doing with other things.
You can't landlock my land.
You could table and bring it up at a future council meeting, too.
So my question is, though, is we were going to discuss this in the workshop. Do we need to discuss this in the workshop, or do we need to go forward right now with it?
So what is he asking at this point?
Pardon me?
What's, what's, Mike, what are you asking at this point?
Well, I'm asking if you agree with this, and then you deny mine down the road, my land is basically going to be landlocked. So you need to act on mine before you do this or something, because that 40-foot ravine, there's no way you can get access across that. And what I'm asking for, it's not going to cost the city anything. All they have to do is give me access along that fence line. It's never been used as landfill or anything. It's the old road that went into the landfill. It's an easement, just like any other road, there's no other liability or anything else. Everybody's making such a big deal of liability and cost. There is no cost to it. All it is, is give me access along that fence line.
But to, to access that, wouldn't you have to go on?
Pardon?
To access with the, that fence line that you're talking about, would you have to go on his property? Enter his property to do that?
I don't, I don't have to enter anybody's property. I would be going along the fence back in 2010. They're, they even got a surveyor team and stuff and set it all up, and it's never acted on. 2006, it was never acted on. For some reason, they keep letting it go, and they've never denied it. Back in 81, they supposedly did, but Dave Sperry said that I had access through Bickel's property, which you're giving, taking away now, basically, with that big ravine. But what I'm asking for is it costing the city a darn thing.
So Mike, we're not, we're discussing the easement. It's not on the agenda. It's on the workshop. They're not going to, I mean, they can't make a decision tonight on your.
Well, it's been on the workshop since 2006, and you keep putting it on. Well, I mean, you can raise your hands all you want.
Right.
But.
And, and Mike, like I said, we'll.
It's getting crazy.
Okay.
All right, but down the road, you deny it, then I'm screwed.
If the council wishes to table this, they can. That's totally up to them.
So actually, the, the motion that is on the floor right now isn't, is for Mr. Norris, Morris's property, and we need to either continue with that. They've had the public hearing, they've gone before the city planning and everything. We need to go on with that. If the council chooses to table it, that, that's their right. If they choose not to table it, we go ahead and vote for this, and, and if it passes or doesn't pass, then we will move to the workshop and discuss with what you're talking to us about, Mr. Meritz. So.
And then if you deny it, what happens?
Pardon me?
And then if you deny me after the workshop, then what happens? I don't have any access.
Well, we, we can discuss that during the workshop.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
About the vacating part. So the platted streets aren't usable, and so for them to get access to it, when will they be worked on to be usable?
I'm sorry?
If the platted streets aren't usable for the neighbors to get to the properties, when will they be worked on to be usable?
That would be up to the council to decide whether they wanted to open those up or if they wanted to just let the property owners do a gravel road or something of that nature.
Typically, a road that's platted like this, if it is going to get developed at some point in the future, it is a developer who does, does the infrastructure. They put it in place. And I haven't heard anyone saying that they want to do that at, at this point. It's just set there for that to occur in the future. But typically, a subdivision, whoever the developer is, is putting that in.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, is that if the roads are developed, would the city be developing them or the homeowners? But you're saying it would be like a private development?
Usually, if you have a subdivision like this, when you have platted streets, the streets, when they get constructed, is by a developer to put them in. For the city to take them over at the end, they have to be developed, they have to be installed to city specs for, for them to be acceptable for the city to, to take. Otherwise, they are, end up being a private street.
I guess I just don't understand, then, if we vacate these, how are they going to get to their houses? Like, how are they going to get to their properties?
There isn't any houses.
They're not.
I guess the question is, how do they currently access their land?
Yeah, how would they?
Because it, they're only streets on paper, they're not.
There's no houses. This is just empty lots.
It's timber.
It's, yeah.
And that's what, Mr. Morris? What, as, as he's looking at doing, what he's looking at doing here, it was a piece of property that, that previously was set up with the thought that in the future, they may develop it with multiple houses. He's looking now at maybe one or two structures going back in there?
Just my, my own house, yeah.
So he's, he's not contemplating the idea of developing his property like that.
So my question, then, I guess from Mr. Meritz, how do you get to your property now? How do you access this property now? On Hilton Road, which we're not looking at changing at all. We're not looking at changing Hilton Road at all, so I guess that's, that's.
No, I don't get a half mile over to that property.
But.
If I, there is no way you can develop that house, that property, put a house under your angle, so the city can get more tax on your angle. You can't, the property is worthless unless I self-visit.
Well, but right now, there is not a developed road that goes to this property, correct? There is not an actual developed road that goes to this property.
No, and I don't need to know, really, to get access.
But you said you're getting there now from Hilton Road.
Okay, but again, we need to go back to what's on the table.
Because if, if, if these roads here are not affected by Hilton Road, I don't, I guess I don't comprehend why these two even coincide together.
So he bought the property in 1980 from the city of Keokuk. At that point, there was two, I think, I think there were, there was four parcels. They were all told that there was no access to the properties, and they could, you know, they didn't, they could just, the bids could just be dropped. Everybody went ahead and purchased the properties, knowing that there was not any access other than across the railroad tracks or through Bickel's property, is, that's what they called it, and now it's Morris's property. Mr. Meritz came back in 81, asked the city for an easement through the old landfill. It was denied. So he has came back several times to request an easement. In 2010 or 2006, Bill Richards actually suggested to the council that an easement be given to him. There was an easement document that was prepared, but there's no council backup giving him that easement. So once we get to the workshop, there's two letters, one from Klinger and Associates, who has, does our landfill, and then one from the city attorney, you know, that is giving his opinion on our liability on that.
There's seven, seven acres in the city that doesn't, doesn't really have any access. I mean, I've got it a half mile across my, through the middle of my own property and everything, but I, nobody else can ever use that land except me. And it's just, it's a worthless piece of property if I don't have access. That's why, the only reason I'm arguing this, I want, I want him to get what he wants to, but I, I can't get it through Bickels now if you do that, because you'll never get through a 30, 40-foot ravine. And the city, the, through the old, the landfill, it's not really going to cost you anything. If you give me a 30 or 40-foot easement along that fence, I put the gravel in, and it's not the old landfill itself, because that was not used along there for the.
Okay, so.
I only had one more question, Pam. So the easement along the fence that he's looking at, is that on the property that you gave us these papers for?
Yes.
On the landfill?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's, yes, it would be on the landfill, and there is some, and I don't know much about the landfill, but there are some monitoring wells in that area.
When I bought the land, she's saying that it was, said there wasn't going to be any access given. There was a gentleman's agreement that they would give me access, and I've been working on that. You can talk to Bill Richards, he was, how long was he on there? I mean, I worked with him for years trying to get this done, and he did those two things, and they still didn't act on it. Why, I don't know. It was never denied, it just never acted on. And whether it was never brought to the council, don't know that either. And Pam, I don't know if you went back through all the records, see if that was or not. But anyway, been working on, there was a gentleman's agreement between me and the mayor and a couple of council members at that point in time. They, they knew you can't really landlock land, and they said, well, you can get it through Bickels. So that was kind of a catch, but as you can see, that doesn't really work out either, so.
Okay, so what we're going to do, I'm going to call for a vote. We have a first, and we have a second. Is that correct? The last.
I have a question first.
Yes.
Are we only voting on the vacation? Or are we voting on the vacation and the price we're expecting him to pay?
It's part of that resolution.
It's, it says some certain, so it's $10,000 is what, I mean, that, that's up to you guys, if you want to accept the $10,000 as the broker's price.
Personally, I do not, so I would like to make a motion to reduce that down to the 5,000 that was first mentioned by Mr. Frenow when we first discussed this issue.
As I said, I wanted it to be something that wasn't too large, but we also, I mean, part of why she went to a broker is to try to find out what, where, we have to set a figure that.
Is a fair market value, and that's the.
From, from a city perspective, because we protect the citizens of the whole community. But, I mean, you do have flexibility within what you're going to do for, I mean, making an amendment. But yes, when I did talk about this originally, I didn't want, I did want it to not be too large. At the same time, it's, you could look at our past practice, it would have been 40,000 or 50,000.
It's like 43,000, yeah.
So are, Dorothy, is that an amendment to what we're going to talk about or not?
I thought I said I wanted to make a men.
Okay.
Amendment.
So we, can we add that to this or not?
You have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second to that?
Yes, we do.
Or an amendment?
Not yet, you don't.
No, we do not.
You don't get a second, it dies.
Yeah, so that, that amendment dies. And now we still have on the floor the item number 12, and I'm going to read it again. Consider resolution vacating and disposing for a sum certain of platted, undeveloped streets and alleys in Hawkeye Edition, Keokuk, Iowa, Lee County, Iowa. We do have a first and a second. I think we've had a lot of discussions, so I am going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You can have a roll call.
Yes, we'll need a roll call. Frenshaw?
No.
Mullen?
Yes.
Tackley?
No.
Dade?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Greenwalds?
Yes.
Six ayes, two nays. Motion passes. Item number 13, council liaison reports. Do we have any? Anybody? Item number 14, staff reports.
Just to inform the council in our 212 building, which is the Park Bridge offices, tractor storage, and that kind of stuff. One of the furnaces did go out this week. We had it looked at by Interlese, and it determined it was done. So we did order a furnace yesterday, and that will be installed, hopefully, the first part of next week.
Anybody else? No?
I would just mention, I started to say, and I hate that I then don't know whether it's true or not, looking at the city council, under the city council portion of the webpage, there is a section for council agenda and minutes. And as, as the meetings go through, there's, we do post for all the years, the, the council meeting agenda and then a council meeting minutes on the website. For the current, for the current meeting, we have that posted with the backup materials. So the majority of the, the information that the council has in hand is available to the public on the city's website, and people are really encouraged to go find it. I, I do apologize, it's not easy to find stuff on the city website. It's probably not used, it's not very user-friendly. If you go under, on the city's website to, under city government, under city council, and under that, it has a dropdown for the agendas and minutes, and it is something everyone is encouraged to go take a look at. The council is asked on a week, a bi-weekly basis to, to review 100 pages typically of material. And you don't see that when you sit here and, and watch a council meeting occurring here. We don't have a full, full discussion of what all that background material is, but they do have it as part of what they, as backdrop. So they have back, background information to make sure they understand the decisions that they're making and why they should be making them, what they should be thinking about as they're going to do it. And folks should take a look at what's out there. For, for us to know as a community what's going on and why decisions are made, the only way that you can really have a full understanding is if you do go back and take a look through that. But I know it's time-intensive, and it's hard to get anybody to do it, and if I was sitting out in a community, I wouldn't do it myself. But it does answer a lot of questions. If you're not sure why people are voting the way they do on an issue, you can typically find out a lot if you go and look at the background information in the packet.
And with that being said, public input is always recommended and considered, and we'd always like to hear what the public has to say, so.
Or people can just ask us, too.
Yeah.
Just email us. Call.
I'd just like to remind everyone that not everybody has a computer, not everybody has a smartphone, and to, I've heard it discussed that council people should get their questions answered before coming to the meetings. I received lots of comments thanking me for asking questions, to bring to light things that I feel are important that the public needs to know. They get published in the newspaper, not everybody subscribes to the newspaper. But we cannot get a proactive society if we're getting information just two days before a meeting. And then it's discussed, or we act on something, it comes out in the paper, and then we get people to be reactive to our decisions. I know it's a vicious circle, so I don't know the solution, but I just want everybody to keep in mind that there are situations where we need to have discussions.
Okay, anybody else? Item number 15.
Yeah, a question. So is Mr. Meritz's proposed easement, is that on workshop, or where is that at?
That will be on workshop as soon as this meeting's over.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, we're at number 15, new business, anybody? Item number 16, I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Take about three minutes, and we'll come back to the workshop. Here we go. Like to open the council workshop, December 4th, 2025, immediately following the council meeting. The, um, dis. The, um, discussion, number one discussion is regarding easement requested by Mike Merritt's, and I'm gonna open it to, um, Pam Broome Hall to, uh, give us some information.
Okay. So has everybody been able to read my memo to the council?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you have any questions on that? On the memo? We did get, and have, have you been able to read the Klingler and Associates and the, um, email from Jim Dennis?
I guess the only question I would have, I was reading the one from Jim and he's talking about, you know, we have limited, it's limited, limited what we can do, we, what we can restrict. If we grant an easement to somebody, do we have the ability to put in a no-fault clause to the city? To where it, you know, if we're granting them this, anybody that they would grant access to this easement, they would be the ones that would hold the liability versus the city? Is that something we can, we can even legally do?
Well, I think as Jim stated, it's only as good as, I'm not sure what he actually stated on here.
So what he did say in there, you can write that in there and, and, but the prob, the, the problem is the city will always be the backstop. And we can't do away with our liability when we're the property owner.
Well, I understand that.
And that was the long and short of what he's saying in that is that, uh, even if you write a clause in like that, uh, it, it can help to protect the city, but we are always gonna be the deep pocket that will back up anything.
And I, I, I would understand that, I would expect that, I guess, but that, that would be my only reservation. I have no problem with granting an easement because I, I understand the situation, but I would at least, would, would like to see us as a city, put some sort of no-fault clause in. At least, we'd have a leg to stand on if it ever did end up going to court. It's like, hey, he knew, you know, that this should fall back on him and at least we wouldn't necessarily be the only one, if there was never some lawsuit or civil action suit taken, we wouldn't be the only ones on the hook for that. Would be, that, that'd be my only addition if we're gonna do this, is just make sure we protect ourselves as much as we can.
So as I said earlier, I am not familiar, I've never dealt with the landfills, um, within the city, so it's, it's always been pebbly works. So when I was actually looking for documentation on the landfill, it is a closed landfill. Um, and there is a gate that goes across 20th Street. 20th Street actually ends, um, prior to getting to the city's property. Um, and I, when somebody had mentioned the gate, I thought, you can't gate an open street. I mean, it's, you know, but then when I was looking through the documentation, that was one of the requirements for the closed landfill, is that the landfill had to be, that road needed gated and there needed to be signage on it and it needed to be locked. Not saying that we couldn't do something someplace else for that. The other thing is, um, I did read in, um, about the restrictive covenant. Um, so I need to make, we need to research that to see if there's any restrictive covenants on the property once it got closed. So, um, I'll have maybe Jim or someone else see if they could look through the deed and see if I can find anything on that prior to, because that may also limit the city of what they could do, actually do with the property. This is totally, um, I know that John just spoke with me, um, you know, he said if we could maybe hug the property line, he would give Mr. Morrison easement over his, um, three acres, um, which would be, this is Mr. Merritt's here and John owns this part here. Um, so there's still some discussion. I just, I, I want to make sure you guys have all the information before I put it on a resolution for you to either deny it or, or approve it. Um, so I guess I still have a few more things that I didn't realize that I needed, um, before you can actually make a decision.
Then, then are you proposing that you go down Hickory Street to 20th Street to, to Mr. Merritt's property?
Well, he's, he's asking about the 20th Street, uh, adjacent to these cemetery and the sanitation department, is where he's asking for the, um, easement.
20th Street across the dump, hugging the elks, and then across my three acres to access his seven.
I know that there's still some, I don't know if, I think they're plugged, but there's still some monitoring wells out there. Um, and I'm sorry, I didn't print, um, document of the actual monitoring wells and where they're at and the swell that they had to build out there for the water and, which is fairly close to this property.
Is the fence right on the, the edge of the landfill? Do you know?
Um, so it would be just outside of where the engineers drew on the map where the limits of the landfill is.
And the fence runs right alongside that somewhere, it's pretty close?
We don't have those maps with us, but so the, the actual limits of the landfill is more shaped like a kidney bean.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's rounded, kind of bigger towards the elk side, it's narrower as it heads away from the elks. Um, that fence line runs kind of along that edge.
Okay. Cause if, I guess my, my, my thinking is-
There's not much of that fence, when you get down to the timber, there's not much of that fence left.
If the fence line is pretty close to what would have been the property line or the, the landfill line, chances of us having a monitoring well right at the edge of the property versus in somewhere in the middle of the property, or there wouldn't have been quite as much landfill on the edge. I think about like a field out, you know, you've always got the grass on the very outside of the field. It's more solid than you get 30 feet, 70 yards into the field. Now you've got pretty substantial. I would think the landfill, so, I guess as a liability things, it, our, our chances of having an issue if he, if we do right next to fence, I would think would be less than if we had him go right across the middle of the landfill.
I totally agree with you. I was gonna make that point here shortly. I was gonna ask questions about setbacks and stuff, because it clearly was a border at some point. And so, would there have been dangerous landfill on, on a property line, on a border, or were there setbacks?
So generally, when they, there are monitoring wells that kind of run down that fence line?
The north fence line.
The north, so if it- If you're looking at the property, it's like an L shape right there now. Where 20th Street's right here, this is the elks, this is the city property, and that fence is an L shape up at the top of it. Um, so the, the limits of where they would show on that map would be like the extent of the cap, which would go out, which would go outside the limits of the, where they actually buried the trash. I can't tell you how far because that, that was closed in like 70, I want to say 78, 79, somewhere in that neighborhood. Then they, then there's a 30-year post-closure requirement and, so all of this, they did, they did a regrading in around 2003 where they put some drainage li, or not lines, but some rock and some drainage areas in to let the water run from, off the cap down to Soap Creek. Um, the wells generally are placed more towards the outside because they're, they're trying to monitor the water coming out, that would come out of the landfill. And then some of, some of them are also gas monitoring wells for the, like methane and that kind of stuff that, that generates.
The cap, if I read this correctly, is like four to five feet?
Thick, yep.
Should be.
Should be.
What was the well's last monitored?
Uh, 2000 and-
2008 or something, that's what I saw in here.
Yeah, there's a report from-
Monitoring.
So they had to do, they did, uh-
About 2008.
They monitored them in the early 2000s and then they, they capped them, I believe they filled them and capped them around 2008. So the, the physical, you could see where they were, but they, they filled the, the well down to the, to where they were doing the monitoring.
See, when I'm out there, I mean, I'm like, there's a lot of water. Now, I have to go and get your research, because there's never been a water, that's that, we may have grown going into the landfill. It's all, that fence line, it's just so simple, I've been arguing this for 40 years.
Really, the only, and this, the only expense that we would incur as a city, um, like Pam was talking about, we would have to move where we've got that gated. Down a, bit closer to the intersection of Lincoln and 20th. We'd have to move our gate, um, back up to, up, up off of the road right away to our property and probably install some fencing, um, to allow-
What are you thinking, cost-wise?
I haven't, I haven't even looked into it, to be honest with you.
You're not, you're not talking of moving a lot, though, is that?
And we, we probably would want to look into actually, with some of the issues that we do get reported out there from people like sneaking through the cemetery, maybe having fun or whatever out there on the, on the, actually on the cap where that would be at, um, I'd probably look at putting the fence down along that and just fencing in our sanitation and our stockpiles. Our, also our street department oil tanks are out there that they use for when they oil this, oil and seal the streets. Um, we just want to look at making that more secure if we had to move that fence.
Well, that'd be the time to do it if we're gonna do it, just do it.
So would it be a possibility to sell Mr. Merritt's a strip of land?
That was my next question.
A small, I mean, just something that would be able to get him back there, uh, that would abut the property line?
I guess that was my next-
And then the city wouldn't be liable for that?
Question for you, is that something we could potentially plot out and just sell him 20, 25 feet width-wise, the length of that, and it would be his property?
I think you can, as long as you've made sure that you've cleared your issues with, uh, DNR and, you know-
Because-
Separation from the landfill. Cause we don't lose that liability for the-
That's why, because then-
Even if we sell it, if it was, had the landfill under it, we still have that.
Well, we'd have to obviously get that all approved through the state.
Well, Klingler, they, they contacted the DNR, they just left a message and they're waiting for the, um, return phone call from them on, on the cans and cans, just because it is a landfill. And I realize the easement's gonna run, it's gonna skirt the bottom end of that, but probably where there isn't any trash, but we just, we're just trying to cover our bases.
And it looks like, I mean, the concern here is that it was a landfill, hazardous stuff. And it's, no matter if we sell it, if we, you know, we're still gonna be liable for anything, any actions that happen on that.
And depend on, depending on which route we go with the easement, will make a little bit of a difference too.
I think, I think what Devin's trying to say, and we need to make note that no matter what we sell, if part of it has anything to do with the landfill, we will be liable always, even though we sold it to somebody else. And we need to understand that because we've been, and then we also need to remember that we have a letter from our city attorney and we have another letter that are advising us not to sell part of the land, I mean, not to you, to go across the landfill. Now, to sell it, I, I don't know if that's the way it would happen or not, but we have to remember that no matter what happens, we would be liable, no matter who owns it, because we originally had the landfill.
And you know, our liability, we, we, yes, we would still be liable. Our liability becomes a lot less if you're not going across the middle of the landfill as opposed to-
Are you more liable than any other street park or anything else with the, I mean, no more, you're making such a big deal on landfill. No more than any other city owner, right?
Well, Mr. Merritt, this has to do with the EPA and the DNR too, and that makes a difference. It does.
Could I approach and make some comments?
Yes, you can.
I appreciate it. Um, and I, I just wanted to speak on what you all are discussing. I have a few comments I'd like to make. First of all, I just want to express support in this easement being, uh, given to Mr. Merritt's. Um, and I think Brackenberry's, who are neighbors out there as well, are staying here and supporting Mr. Merritt's getting that easement. Secondly, one point that I'd like to bring up, um, depending on where the lines fall with the land swap that was, uh, handshaken and not recorded with the elks and the city, um, what we're proposing, I believe, is gonna fall directly on what is currently the elks property that the city agreed to trade and what is currently golf course that is currently in the city's ownership, if that makes sense. So, right now, it would be hugging a cart path and a tee box that's on the golf course that belongs to the city currently on the books. And the other portion of that easement would go across property that the city has handshaken that they would give to the elks. So, um, and then the third thing I wanted to say on liability, um, I don't know if it's different or not, um, I'm not sure where you're getting the, who's telling you that you would be liable no matter what, and maybe it's different with dumps. I did purchase a property in town a few years ago. Um, the, the DNR had monitoring wells, it had fuel leakage, it was contaminated, all the red flags were there. All I had to do was sign consenting that I understood my liability with that property and that I couldn't build, couldn't disturb the ground, so on and so forth. So there was stuff, there was extenuating paperwork that I had to acknowledge and sign when it was sold to me, but the previous owner held no liability after I bought it. Maybe different with dumps, but I just, worth pointing out. Um, so anyways, I just wanted to make those points. I don't think we're talking about an easement anywhere that you haven't already agreed to trade with the golf course or that is yours currently and is golf course. And then secondly, um, liability from selling it or otherwise, I'm sure you could navigate that, uh, if you got with the proper channels, with the DNR, with the EPA. So, thank you. Thanks for hearing me.
So, Brian, I'd like you to talk about where you're at with the golf course.
Yeah, so, uh, back in 2010, the city did enter into an agreement with the elks. It did go before the council, it was approved, uh, the surveys were completed, the plaits were drawn, and somewhere along the lines, those never got filed. Um, I did meet with the elks a week ago and we, we revisited it because no one on the current elks board was on the elks board in 2010. Um, they are obviously still in favor in that because currently we own the tee box on number seven. It's on city property, um, they would like that to be on their property. So, um, the process right now is we're gonna get those plaits to our city attorney, they're going, they're gonna go through the land swap process, getting the abstracts updated and all that kind of thing. Assuming that will probably, just, just because of time, probably take about a month. Um, but then there has been also an easement surveyed in that same timeframe that does run across the property that is currently the elks, which will be the city's, um, which that top portion of that is way away from the landfill. It's just when you come down the diagonal that it would get close on the bottom end. But since then, Mr. Morrison says that he, he will give an easement across his property, which will keep us, everything well away from the landfill.
Yeah, the tee box he just mentioned, that, that's the city's property currently, that's, the easement would go right next to that tee box, just right down the ditch.
Yep.
So you potentially do have a way to do an easement that didn't cross over the former-
Well, now we do, since, since-
So, I mean, that's, that's something I can avoid that issue.
Previously, I had suggested out in the landfill because there's gravel roads, but given that you vacated and are disposing, I think that's what was passed earlier, so, um, and given that Mr. Merritt's would be happy with it, I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, that, that easement plat that we had done will have to be modified a little bit because of that, but, and then we'll, we can talk to Mr. Merritt's about the width. Right now, I think it's drawn at 50 feet, I believe.
It's on, it's in the packet here, saving.
And just to be that guy, cause I am, when you're talking liability, uh, if you, if you're going to handshake and trade the elks, a triangle for a triangle, are you gonna still have the liability for the triangle you're giving them? And there obviously is no city liability on the triangle you're going to be receiving. So half of what we're talking about, for sure, there's no liability with city, because you don't own it on paper yet. The other half, you're willing to give it away to the elks, so why not give an easement to Mr. Merritt's?
It actually was not on the handshake. I've got all the documentation.
Sure, it wasn't recorded.
It was formally approved.
Vervage, vervage, it matters.
Yep.
But it was, it was, it was approved by the-
It was formally approved by the council.
Yeah, it has been.
So it just wasn't finished.
It just wasn't recorded, I don't think.
So I just, I just want to clarify, the way this conversation has gone here, is that it seems like there is an option that's being discussed right now. We need to get some paperwork done and get some, um, property lines adjusted to reflect paperwork. But then, once that is completed, there's a way that does not involve going by or on the landfill that achieves the outcomes that all the parties want as their desire tonight? Is, am I correct in that interpretation?
You are. If Mr. Morris gives, um, Mr. Merritt's an easement.
You would want to, you would want the transfer to get finished with the-
We, we would have to get the property transfer with the elks finished first.
And you would want any sort of, uh, this, what's happened with- And you would want any sort of, uh, this, what's happened with this discussion, you'd want all parties having that, the easements, make sure they're coordinated, so that you know that you have a full access being part of that package.
Correct. So the property transfer would have to happen before we can give an easement across the property, because right, as of right now, we don't own that.
Then an easement recording for each parcel, that's included then, yeah.
One other thing worth mentioning, 'cause it'll probably get brought up to you all at some point, the, the 20th Street he mentioned that's gated currently, there's, there's probably gonna be individuals in charge or that work out there that have a, a problem with moving that gate, but currently on the books, that's a public street, so the gate really shouldn't be there to begin with, but just preparing you that that's gonna come out.
So it sounds like, um, there's sort of a solution that we are looking into, and, um, thank you for your offer, and Mr. Merritt's, we are more than happy to try to get you to that piece of property the easiest way we can, um, I know Pam and Brian are gonna work on it, and, um, they'll be getting back to you, right, guys? Getting ahold of you?
Yeah, we'll get, um, the documentation as far as everything that we can find, um, to make sure everything's good, and get that, Jim is, um, I think, out of town at the moment, but as soon as he gets back in, we'll have him start, um, on the process.
Okay, and, and again, um, thank you for your suggestion, thanks Pam and Brian for all that, and thanks, Mr. Merritt's, for being patient, I know it's not easy, but thank you very much, and with all that being said, if there's nothing else to say, let's go home, guys.